Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to a order and wish everyone happy holidays and a happy new year as we won't see you until then. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. However, there is time provided for public participation during the meeting as indicated herein by law 0165.1B. Should be noted that the Board of Education members receive their agendas several days prior to the actual meeting, thus they've had considerable opportunity to study it, ask questions, etc. Guests and participants are asked to silence their cellphones and put them away for the duration of the meeting. Roll call please.
This is Bobber. This is Evern. Mr. Carlo.
Here.
Mr. Lydic.
Here.
This is Mark.
And if you could please stand and join me in the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I do not have any public participation at this time, so maybe I will move to approve the agenda. Roll call please.
Mr. Lydic.
Aye.
This is Mark.
Aye.
This is Evern.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo.
Aye.
And with that, we'll move it over to the call.
Right, and I feel like most of the meeting is gonna happen in my section of the agenda this evening. So I just, I have a couple of comments and then a few presentations this evening. The first one is to just give a Canyon Brook update. We literally talk about Canyon Brook probably every single day at least once, and today Tom and Vinnie and Rob and I met with some members from the Summit County team just to further talk about the impact to our district and then the impact to some of the areas of concern for them as well. So, just a great opportunity to continue to share our story and to find ways that we might be able to resolve the issue. We know that nothing's gonna happen very fast, but we believe that through that communication we have all the right people at the table. So, that has been good. Fortunately, we have not had to enact that alternate route yet, but our families are well-prepared for it. We have some different modes of communication that we've already been able to practice a few different times, and that's through our Stop Finder app. If by chance our families don't have that, they'll also get a notification through our All Call system that just targets our Canyon Brook families, and then also an email follow-up to that. Kaitlyn's worked with our EMIS coordinator on how to code absences so that our families won't be penalized for that, and we can do a look back too if, let's say that we missed a day, we're able to look back and make sure that that's applied appropriately. So while it's not a perfect solution, we do feel that it is something for us to work with right now. The next item that I am required to share with you is our semi-annual bullying and harassment data. So, like I've done in the past, I'm just gonna read this to you. So this is something that we report in December and June each year, and it's in compliance with RC 3313.666B10. The district is required to report the number of bullying incidents to the board. Bullying is unwanted aggressive behavior among students that involves a power imbalance and is repeated over time. This data reflects bullying behavior that has been repeated enough to warrant in or out-of-school suspension from school. So at the elementary school, we have zero incidents of harassment and one incident of bullying. At the middle school, we've had eight incidents of harassment and zero incidents of bullying. And at the high school, we've had two incidents of harassment and one incident of bullying. So this is information that'll also be posted on our district website, and Kaitlyn will work with Eric to make sure that that's in the appropriate place there. And then, moving on to our first presentation, I'm gonna invite Mr. Vasalati up. He's gonna give a summary of our course catalog. The process for this is we share the information in December with you, and then pending any recommendations for changes, then in January we would bring it back for approval. And when that happens, we are starting to schedule students right after that break. So we're already talking about next school year, and we haven't even had our winter break yet. And this is also, I have to just say one thing, I'm sorry, Mr. Vasalati, but this is really a labor of love, this course catalog. Our administrators come together, our teachers, our counselors, and for months they're studying the courses that we've had, the enrollment of those courses, and our kids really have the vote, and our kids are telling us what they're interested and what they're not interested in, and they do that alongside Mr. Morgan too, of what the courses are required for graduation that we have to offer, and then what courses our kids are interested in for that elective too. And Mr. Vasal, share some more information on that process.
For those of you that don't know who I am, I'm Chris Vasalati. It's my, I think, 11th year as counselor here at the high school after being a special ed teacher. And just to speak to what Mrs. Os said about our selection process for scheduling, it is a labor of love, not just what goes into the course catalog, but we start meeting with our eighth graders as well through our returning freshmen, sophomores, and juniors coming back next year, middle of January, and then we pick up the eighth graders first week of February typically. And, I mean, the majority of the rest of the semester is talking to kids about their classes. We try to get everything input prior to our master scheduling, which I have found, and I know it goes back to before Joel Morgan was principal here, I don't know that many schools in this area wrap up their master scheduling for their high school as soon as we do. People are amazed at how quickly administration and the counseling staff and the teachers here get our master schedule in place for the following school year. I am going to specifically, or not specifically, just kinda in general, talk about things and changes that are into our course catalog for next year. First, the biggest change that goes into effect for the class of 2026 are the Ohio Department of Education Academic Honors Diploma updates. For the last several years, each graduating class could follow the new standards which have to start for next year's graduating class, or they could follow the old standards. So, those of you that are in here, or if you know people in the community who have had sons and daughters come through here before, or just in general at other schools, if you hear about new academic standards for an honors diploma, yes, it has changed slightly. To make a long story short, they've increased the number of requirements, but just like previously, you're allowed to not meet one of them. So, you don't have to be across the board, meet every single one, but those standards, for all the different types of academic honor diplomas, are in the course catalog. There's also an updated description from our math department for the Mathematical Modeling and Reasoning course, which is now, we've had it for several years. The Ohio Department of Education approved this course as an alternative to Algebra II going back many years. They said that Algebra II had to be a mathematical requirement to graduate from high school. It wasn't just, it couldn't just be one of three, it had to be one of your four. And for many different reasons, they started to come out with alternatives. So, your son or daughter, when they're juniors, will have an opportunity to take the Mathematical Modeling and Reasoning class in place of Algebra II, or they could take it in addition to it before they graduate. So, updated description of that is in our course catalog. And then the last thing I wanna do is highlight two new advanced placement AP offerings that we're going to have. AP Psychology taught by Natalie Foreman next year. Natalie already teaches two sections, or excuse me, two levels of psychology. She teaches Psych I and Psych II. She does a great job of it. We've had many kids that have enjoyed taking it so much that they, if they've taken it their junior year or fall semester of their senior year, they go on if they're in College Credit Plus, and they'll take it at the college level before they graduate because they're so interested in it. And I know my own stepdaughter ended up minoring in psychology at the college level because she had Natalie for it and she loved it. Another new AP offering next year will be AP Precálculus taught by Miranda Rockhold. Miranda currently teaches Statistics and Honors Precálculus. It is our hope, we'll find out when kids sign up, that in addition to offering AP Precalc, we'll still offer at least one section, if not more, of regular Precálculus as well. I was talking to Joel Morgan before the meeting, and those two AP offerings put us at 11. I like to think we have 13 though, because several years ago Shelby Shea, who's no longer with us, started AP Art and Design, and actually, your sons and daughters can take three different AP classes within that. They can take AP Drawing one year, AP Two-Dimensional, and AP Three-Dimensional. So, I like to kinda brag that we have 13 offerings instead of 11. Other new courses for next year, Accounting by our one business teacher, John Avinyard, will be returning. There's just been a lot more kids as they had to take Financial Literacy per the state requirement. More kids are asking for more things in the personal finance area. So it's our hope that they follow through on that and sign up for the accounting class, which we've had previously, and she's excited to be teaching it again. Patty Lammer, our new Computer Science teacher this year, we stole her from the elementary building, we're excited to have her. She's gonna be expanding her program next year and offering a web design course. We actually had a course by that name previously, but the design, no pun intended, of this class is much different. And Patty, we're thinking, in a couple of years, maybe next year at this time, we'll be telling you we're gonna be adding AP Computer Science. That's a goal of Patty's. Scott Klein in our art department will be teaching a brand-new course next year called Content Creation for Digital and Print Media. In addition to trying to get kids to understand the impact of social media, not just in what's going on around them, but in their own lives, it's his hope, and I don't wanna, you know, speak for him too much, but it's his hope that he encompasses things that are happening at all the buildings and not just here at the high school in that course. And lastly, it's actually gonna be the second year it's offered, but we didn't decide to offer it until late last year, late in the summer, Sports Officiating Class by Mike Massey. It's an awesome opportunity. You don't have to be a varsity athlete here. It gives kids an opportunity to take the exact same course that officials in any sport that become licensed in their state take. When they take it, whether they're a 14-year-old freshman or an 18 or 19-year-old senior, they'll have an officiating card, and they'll be able to officiate games at the very minimum at the youth level and the middle school level. So, it's a great opportunity. You will get certified for three sports in the semester that you take the class, because you get certified in a different sport about every six to seven weeks. And then, yeah?
Make sure when they teach that class, they have something on how kids can handle it when parents yell and scream.
Absolutely, yes.
My son was one for soccer until some parent just ripped him, and he said, "Do it again." I tried to talk to him, it was no, you know, he just didn't know how to handle it.
Right.
You know, whether he was right or wrong, didn't matter, it was just that the parent was like yelling and screaming at him.
Kids, well, high school students getting certified, and even adults, I officiate high school basketball, adults as well. That is probably the number-one reason that people either don't wanna try it, or once they're in it, they get out. Doesn't matter how much they're working, how much money they might make, they don't wanna deal with people like us in the stands. I wanted to make another point about the officiating class. An officer in our athletic conference, the Metro Athletic Conference, he's actually in a signer for our conference, he assigns all the games. Mike Massey and I invited him to come in and speak to the class, and the kids loved it. They got to hear his side of it, I'm sure that was one of the talking points. So, it's just a great opportunity for the kids, and it's a part-time job where they get, excuse me, they get to control their schedule, work as much as they want or as little as they want. And then, last but not least, I wanna thank Jennifer Trump, our Counseling Office Secretary. In addition to just adding that logo, which has been around for over a decade now, on the cover of our course catalog, she just kinda changed the layout a little bit, so if you've been looking at it online over the last few years, you'll notice it looks a little different. But she's talking about a labor of love, she does a great job doing that, so, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Chris.
Good.
I'm really excited about the social media course they're gonna offer, especially with the work that we're doing with cellphones and changing practices too. It'll be good to really talk to kids about responsible use of it. Thanks, Taryn. All right, well, I'm gonna invite Ms. Sabala, she's gonna talk about a new internship program that we have for some students at the high school.
Thank you. Can you see, am I, am I? Yeah, I was gonna say, I am going to project here. So, earlier this school year, we started looking at the landscape of just where our students' needs are, specifically our students with special education needs, and the individuals that serve those students. And one of the areas, no surprise, is that we are facing in our society a shortage when it comes to paraprofessionals and special education teachers. And so we wanted to start thinking of ways to offer and increase opportunities for our students here at the high school, and then also, hopefully, also look at supporting that shortage. And so, and so Teresa Novak, who is an intervention specialist here at the high school in our intensive needs classroom, and I worked to develop the Education Career Opportunity, calling it EDCO, student program. And again, this was in response to the event that we are facing a shortage amongst paraprofessionals, which ultimately impacts the quality of support that we're able to provide our students who need it most. And the goal of this is that we would be able to basically offer internship, an internship opportunity here within our district to students who qualify through an application process and grow the field of quality paraprofessionals, so grow our own program to meet that need of a shortage. The way that this really started was that right now we have a unified, we have unified programming. We have previously and currently offered five different unified programs, and these are courses that our students are able to take that allow them to be in a course with students with and without disabilities. It is co-taught by an intervention specialist and a general education teacher, and for students who do not have disabilities, they are also required to go through training within the course through the intervention specialist in a curriculum specific to that to learn more about how to engage and interact and partner with our students with disabilities. And so really, it's about building a peer-to-peer support and interaction amongst our students and creating those inclusive and positive environments. And so being able to expand upon that, we wanted to look at a program that was unique and offered opportunity for hands-on work experience, particularly in the field of education and similar to the role of a paraprofessional. And so, these students would be able to work and assist intervention specialists within the classroom, on classroom tasks, modifications, accommodations, student support, and ultimately provide them a valuable prep in the career of education-related services. So responsibilities, just some responsibilities that they would have is, again, assisting the intervention specialists, supporting students, fostering that positive inclusive learning environment, participating in some behavior management support and engagement strategies, and then ultimately maintaining that confidentiality and professionalism. We want our students who would be part of this to walk away with skills, and so, some of those skills would be that we could, we would be able to work with their counselor and with them. If they needed work-study credit, work-study credit would be offered. We also would be able to potentially have students earn a state seal. When we looked at our research of students not graduating with a traditional diploma, oftentimes it's because that state seal is sometimes difficult to obtain, so we wanted to be able to give an opportunity to meet that need. Being able to look at educational supports and least restrictive environment and gain knowledge in that, as well as intervention strategies. Learning about the difference between modifications and accommodations, and ultimately creating that collaborative development in communication and problem-solving skills. And then, lastly, we want our students to be able to leave this program with certifications and opportunity. And so, they would leave this program as student workers and would be able to have their cover letter and resume ready to go, they would complete the Parapro Assessment, they would have training in the CPI de-escalation techniques. CPI is a, is a support that we use here to help with that de-escalation, and if needed, as last resort, those, those more physical supports. Certification in FERPA, which is our Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, and then a comprehensive understanding of confidentiality and just professional conduct. And so, our ultimate goal is that our students would be able to have work experience, be paid, be able to engage in a potential career that would be right outside of high school and would leave with all those certifications to be able to help support a workforce shortage that we currently have, and ultimately support kids in a different way. So, any questions?
Thanks. Thank you. We use the TWEET program that Eric wants too as a model of that student work experience. And then, you know, if anyone wanted to go beyond the paraprofessional role too, this would be a great basis to give experience in that educational field.
Thinking outside the box.
Yeah, they've done such a great job, I'm really excited to see it roll out. One other thing before we get to the main event, our student recognition, I just wanna draw your attention to this picture I put in front of you. It is, this is our billboard design, so come January, the billboard on Quicken State will have this drawing to get people excited and amped up for the second semester. This was designed by our students in the Bulldog Beat at the high school, and it was really important for them to show community, athletics, and academics. So the students nominated some teachers that they wanted to have featured in that setting. They wanted to make sure that all of our athletics were represented, which is why those are the silhouettes in the middle. Hank, they really wanted Hank on it. Originally Hank was the main focal point, and we had to like make Hank a little smaller. So Hank's on there, and then we have each of our buildings and activity featured in that community piece. So the lemonade stand for our elementary students, we have a unified event, and then middle school championship up there. So, this should be up, and we've contacted all of the families to let them know, because it's a little outside of the box with how we typically do advertising. We have everybody sign those disclosure forms that either we are allowed to post or not, but since they're gonna be in a very large space, we wanted to make sure everybody was on board with that, so. All right. Well, I'm gonna invite Mr. Hosford up for our middle school recognition.
Hello. How we doing? If I can have my five students come on up and join me up here, so that we can get good pictures and talk about you a little bit? All right. Just come up here, stay with me, face that way. Hi Tate. All right. So, as administrators and educators, one of the things that we take the most pride in that we get to do is to be able to recognize our kids for just being great kids, their accomplishments, and just being, you know, showing what the Woodridge Way is about. At the middle school, we like to recognize our kids based on five character traits that we've identified, we call them the language of learning. Those five character traits are courageous, persistent, reflective, engaged, and curious. And so our students who are courageous, they're willing to take risks in their learning and embrace their mistakes while learning from them. They are persistent, when things get tough, so do they. They are determined to reach their goals by staying focused and learning how to solve problems in different ways. They are reflective, they take time to think things through, again, learning from their mistakes, they look to understand what they learned and why they learned it. They are engaged, they are motivated to succeed by taking ownership of their learning and working independently as a team. Independently and as a team. And they are curious, they seek to understand by asking questions, exploring their ideas, and making connections. So tonight, I have with me Tate Nelson. This is Tate. Tate's been recognized for exemplifying the language of learning trait of courage. Tate's not afraid to take risks in his learning, always pushing himself to try new things, even if they might be difficult. He understands that mistakes are a part of the learning process and never lets them hold him back. With a confident attitude, Tate approaches each challenge knowing that he will learn and grow from it. His courage to step out of his comfort zone inspires those around him. We are proud to have his example of what it means to be brave in learning. Good job, Tate. All right. Next up is Kamana, this is Kamana Chroma. Kamana has been selected by her teachers for exemplifying the language of learning trait of persistence. Kamana is an exceptional student who is very goal-oriented. She truly exemplifies what it means to be hard-working, dedicated, and passionate. Whether in academics, extracurriculars, or community involvement, her commitment and desire to better herself and those around her is inspiring. Kamana consistently goes above and beyond, not just in her own pursuits, but in supporting her peers. Her persistence and enthusiasm for learning and positive attitude create an uplifting environment for everyone around her. It's clear that Kamana possesses both the intelligence and character to excel in all areas of life. Next. Slide over, slide over a little bit. Keep going. This is Eliza. Eliza Matisse has been selected by her teachers for exemplifying the language learning trait of being curious. Eliza brightens the room when she walks in, this is according to Mr. Latham. In my room, not only does she take a very active role in mathematics in general, she seeks to understand concepts at a very deep level. She also loves to share her wonderful, out-of-the-box problem-solving methods and adds wonderful insights to lessons. In addition, Eliza quickly became the official zookeeper in my room, caring daily for the fish and the snake in Mr. Latham's trunk. I gotta be honest, I don't, I don't like the snake. All right, Kamana, scooch down, Quinn, come over. This is Quinn Brown. Quinn is a student who's been selected by his teachers for demonstrating the language of learning trait of being reflective. Quinn takes the time to think carefully about his learning and is always eager to improve. He learns from his mistakes and uses them as opportunities to grow. Quinn works hard to understand the material, asking questions and seeking help when needed. He sets goals for himself to continue growing as a learner and shows dedication to achieving them. Quinn is a great example of what it means to be reflective in learning, and we are proud to recognize his efforts. Good job, Quinn. Hey, hi Tate. This is Peyton Honeck. Peyton has been selected by her teachers to represent the language of learning trait of being engaged in her learning. Peyton consistently shows a strong motivation to succeed in her studies and is always involved in class activities. She is able to work independently and also collaborates well with her peers during group projects. Peyton effectively manages her time, balancing schoolwork with outside activities and athletics. Her dedication and hard work make her a role model for her classmates. We are excited to recognize Peyton for her commitment to learning and her positive attitude. All right, so these are our five seventh-grade finest. Thank you guys for doing what you do, we appreciate all your efforts. So one more time, give it up for our seventh graders.
We're gonna come up, but we'll have them.
We're gonna get a picture and give some certificates and stuff, so. Who do you get first?
I'll shake hands.
Who do you get first, Kamana?
I'll come.
They're gonna say hi to you and shake your hand, say good job. And then you can get your student. There you go. Speak. What's your opinion?
I'm listening to you.
Go. Let's do, we had everything. Blessing. Here.
you need to do this.
now and then. Soma has contacted staff members, any patients they have, trying to get them to, you know, to reach out to their employers, to reach out to Anthem. And Anthem is now sending letters out notifying all patients that it's due to expire December 31st. So, it's not to say if they don't reach agreement, they, our staff can't go to, still go to Soma, but it will be a lot more expensive. It will be out of network. So, one of three things could happen. They could not reach the agreement at all, and Soma's done with Anthem. I really don't think that's going to happen. They can do an extension, like a rollover, until they can get, reach an agreement, or they could reach the agreement by December 31st. So, I just kind of wanted to say something to the board, in case you were aware of it, in case any staff members see you out there and about. There's really nothing we can do. We've talked to Anthem. Anthem knows how we feel about it. We're really hoping that they can reach out. I actually talked to a friend of mine who works at Soma, and I was talking to her about it. She just, she agrees. She doesn't see how they can't reach, because they're just both too big. You know, they both need each other.
Is Matco, is Matco new ownership, like, doing, negotiating for them now?
I don't know who's negotiating, but obviously, that's going to be part of it. And the other, part of the reason, I think, truly is because of the Cleveland Clinic. When the Cleveland Clinic took over all these facilities down here, once those contracts ran out, their rates went up. That's one of the reasons our claims are so high. Well, Soma's got to be able to compete. So, Anthem's trying to keep their, their rates down, where they're trying to raise them up, because they, you know. So, obviously, it's, it's something that's ongoing, but hopefully, that's not going to be an issue. But I just wanted to say that to you guys. Two other things, real quick. I want to compliment James Gellerhan. He wrote another grant. He received a $500 grant for the, from the Akron Council of Engineering Grants for his biomed program. And then, in February is usually when I bring the new military rates that we have for all of our levies out there. Usually, that's in February. They send them to us, and I have to bring them to the board. But I, I do know that our bond to build the elementary and the new gym and everything, and the middle school roof, that actually, the military rate is going down from 2.95 to 2.63. So, effective next year, we'll be paying less of the military rate for that. So, I'm trying to add some positive news.
Always a good thing.
I save the best for last. Mr. President, I'm done.
Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
I'll move. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Effronin?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Latham?
Aye.
Brings us to five. Board of Education reports, correspondence and updates, committee reports.
So, we, the Wellness Committee met on November 26th, and they set some dates. So, the PD Day, which is the, like, Staff Health Day, is February 14th, and they have, like, the mammal van and biometric screening coming, and then Haley's doing some mental health sessions for the staff. The bowling event that they do every year is March 15th. They clutch lanes from 12 to 2. So, anyone is welcome to come to that. So, they want to encourage more participation than we had last year. And then Wellness Week is May 12th through the 16th. They're also having discussions about staff, or I'm sorry, students, that they would invite to be part of the Wellness Committee, because right now, we don't have any students on the committee anymore. So...
I want to thank the FCC LA for the toy drive that they did throughout Woodridge, all the schools, for Hartford City. They did a great job. It was headed by Rachel Raid, and we were able to give 402 children a nice Christmas. Their parents or grandparents or foster parents or whoever was legally responsible for, responsible for them came in, were able to get four really nice gifts, and then a few other, like, you know, stocking stuffers, and this, that, and the other. But we also were able to serve 50 children from Woodridge. So, I was real pleased with that, too. And they did a fantastic job. And Mrs. Vineyard, I've yet to talk to her yet. She and, I don't know what group, Yeti, they made these blankets, the kind like you tie. Oh, they're beautiful. They're beautiful. And they were able to give away, and what kid doesn't want a nice warm blanket? So, it was, it was a big success. And if anybody's interested, I do have pictures, and I just want to give a shout out to them.
The Record Retention Committee also met, actually, at 4:33, and we adopted a new record retention schedule, updated one from, and it, we got the template from the state. So, it's just more updated, and we'll get that down to them in the auditor's office now. But that was, not a lot.
All quiet.
All quiet?
Oh, that's not quiet.
Wait till after the first of the year, right?
Timmy, can you send me a couple of those pictures that you have? Great, thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, moves us to six. Consent Resolution, one through seven. I will move. Roll call, please.
Mr. Latham?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Effronin?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Seven, Personnel. A, Certificated Staff.
I'll move.
One and two. I'll second. Discussion.
Well, I can't believe it's true. Mr. Mercer is retiring at the end of this year. He didn't seem like he was old enough to retire. So, we definitely miss him. And the second item, Kiana Jerker, we had her in the wrong column when we gave you that spreadsheet for the Science of Reading stipends last month. So, this is just to correct her, correct her and put her in the appropriate column.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Effronin?
Aye.
Mr. Latham?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
B, Classified Staff, one through eight. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move.
Discussion.
These are a number of shifts based on the contract. So, the first two positions were created by a vacancy, or I'm sorry, one and eight, one and seven are created by vacancies in Transportation Department. So, one is replacing Chet's route, and then the second is replacing then that floater route. Eight is also transportation-related, and this is just adding a person to our sub-list. And then, items two through seven are all within our Custodial Department. So, we had a vacancy at the middle school, and then as we filled it, it created other vacancies. So, these are all of those different movements now. So, all of the spots are filled. But everybody had an opportunity to move around.
Good. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Effronin?
Aye.
Mr. Latham?
Aye.
Brings us to C, Supplemental Contracts. I move?
Second.
Discussion.
We have our seventh grade and eighth grade basketball coach positions for the girls' program. It's prorated, just because they started a little bit later in the season. And then, we have our Set Director for the Spring Musical that we're recommending.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Latham?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Effronin?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Brings us to number eight, Recommendations. A, Ohio School Board Association Membership. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move.
Second.
This is for our membership with OSB AIDS. They renew it annually, and it's a great resource for all of us.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Effronin?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Effronin?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Brings us to number eight, Recommendations. A, Ohio School Board Association Membership. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move.
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion.
This is a small fee that we pay. It's $250 for legal advice, and it's good, just when we're asking general questions about contracts or maybe letters that are coming up that other districts are experiencing the same as us. So, it's nice to be able to use them for that before we have to call our own legal counsel, which is definitely more expensive.
And the price for this has not gone up in probably 15 years.
Okay, good. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Effronin?
Aye.
Mr. Latham?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Brings us to C, In lieu of Transportation Stipend, 2024, 2025. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move.
Get a second, please.
A second.
Discussion.
We have five more students that were added to this list, and this is on a rolling basis. So, we don't really have a deadline of when they can apply for it. So, that's why each month, it seems like there's a couple more that we've added on.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Effronin?
Aye.
Mr. Latham?
Aye.
To D, Set Dates and Times of the January 25th, or January 2025 Board Meetings. Keep them the same.
The organizational meeting must be by January 15th.
I think that my suggestion was to move everything up to... Have our first meeting and combine them with the organizational meeting on the 14th.
That's fine.
I can do that.
It's a Tuesday.
Yeah.
Just the second, Tuesday, Thursday.
And then, we'll do them both back-to-back.
Can we do it a little earlier? Because Allie has a game. But Diane, turn it to miss any of her games.
Can we move it up to 5 o'clock on Tuesday? I'm okay with 5.
Thank you.
All righty, I will...
And then, you'll keep the, it will be a special meeting, but then the normal meeting for January on the 14th also?
That is correct. We'll combine the two.
Do you want to set a time or just put it immediately to follow?
Immediately to follow.
And it's January 14th, right?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. We got everybody good there? Got it? Make it a motion, please.
I'll move. A second.
All right. We don't, we don't have to discuss, because we just did that, right? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Effronin?
Aye.
Mr. Latham?
Aye.
And nine, Finance. A, Purchase Orders. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move.
A second.
I'll second.
Discussion.
This is a small fee that we pay. It's $250 for legal advice, and it's good, just when we're asking general questions about contracts or maybe letters that are coming up that other districts are experiencing the same as us. So, it's nice to be able to use them for that before we have to call our own legal counsel, which is definitely more expensive.
And the price for this has not gone up in probably 15 years.
Okay, good. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Effronin?
Aye.
Mr. Latham?
Aye.
Brings us to D, Set Dates and Times of the January 25th, or January 2025 Board Meetings. Keep them the same.
The organizational meeting must be by January 15th.
I think that my suggestion was to move everything up to... Have our first meeting and combine them with the organizational meeting on the 14th.
That's fine.
I can do that.
It's a Tuesday.
Yeah.
Just the second, Tuesday, Thursday.
And then, we'll do them both back-to-back.
Can we do it a little earlier? Because Allie has a game. But Diane, turn it to miss any of her games.
Can we move it up to 5 o'clock on Tuesday? I'm okay with 5.
Thank you.
All righty, I will...
And then, you'll keep the, it will be a special meeting, but then the normal meeting for January on the 14th also?
That is correct. We'll combine the two.
Do you want to set a time or just put it immediately to follow?
Immediately to follow.
And it's January 14th, right?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. We got everybody good there? Got it? Make it a motion, please.
I'll move. A second.
All right. We don't, we don't have to discuss, because we just did that, right? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Effronin?
Aye.
Mr. Latham?
Aye.
And nine, Finance. A, Purchase Orders. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move.
A second. Discussion.
So, I'm sorry, I have to bring two purchase orders to you. The first one is for the, with All American Sports Corporation for the cleaning of the football uniforms. They do it every year. We just didn't have a purchase order placed. And then, Jefferson ESC, that's our virtual program. We did have a purchase order, but we didn't have enough.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Effronin?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Latham?
Aye.
And I do not have any public participation this time. I will move on to 11. I will move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Latham?
Aye.
Mrs. Effronin?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?